Good evening. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. And this is the Planning Board meeting of April 12, 2016 at 7:00. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first on the list tonight is the Approval Not Required Plan. Nicole and Robert Perry, 5 Snappett Road. It assesses map 34-5-P1 to create two lots out of one, subject to variance dated July 21st, 2015. It was filed with the town clerk March 29th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, they will not be here with us tonight, but I can recommend the board's endorsement of this plan. So what this is doing is creating two lots, one lot with that existing house on it and one lot with the existing barn on it. Usually you would not be able to do this because the barn would have a sideline setback and you would not create a lot that showed a zoning violation. But the property owners have already gone to the Zoning Board of Appeals and requested a variance. You have that in your package. And with that piece in place, I can recommend that you then complete the subdivision through approval not required.
So other than the setback, it meets the frontage and the square footage?
Yes, so, yes. The variance gives them all of the relief that they need.
Does anybody have any comments?
Mr. Chair, as you can see in the ZBA's decision, they've gone through ZBA. ZBA was very specific, gave them the variance. I would recommend that we endorse the A and R for the Perrys F5 Snappett Road.
Second up. So we have a motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have some plans to sign or we'll do that later?
We do. Yep, so we have the Mylar in the copy, so after the meeting.
Okay. Okay, next on the list is a public hearing for Ground Effects Landscaping, LTD, Special Permit 68 Main Street. It assesses map 71-9-3 to allow a full-service landscape construction and maintenance company in a general business district by zoning bylaws 2230 and 5300. And this was filed with the town clerk March 17th, 2016. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
I'm Peter Bishop, this is Shawn Bishop.
How are you?
We're the owners of Ground Effects Landscaping. So we have been operating out of Marshfield since 2001, and we're looking to relocate the 68 Main Street Carver. It's a commercial building, parking lot. We're pretty much using everything same. Our plan would be more or less to keep the back for our residential and commercial landscape maintenance and construction equipment. And then we'd like to do employee parking and some material bins out front for mainly for our own use, but also for retail as well. We also have some side photos of what we kind of want to do, as well as a rendering of what it would look like from the street in terms of the bins for people going up and down Main Street.
So this was a landscaping building before?
Yes, it was.
Another company had it before.
Scott Johnson Landscaping was there for several years.
So you don't really plan on doing anything more to the property?
Other than park our stuff and load up our materials and head on out, that's pretty much it.
Now, you have changed the exterior of the building somewhat, has that been upgraded?
The owner has, Jamie has.
Oh, okay.
He's updated it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's done a significant updating on the facade of the building, made it much more attractive to look at. He redid all the inside office space, bathrooms are all brand new, all the utilities are new. He really did a nice job cleaning it up. It used to be just a brick, brick building.
Right, yeah.
And now, you know, it looks a lot more professional and attractive.
Jamie Emerson, 4 Mizzilli Drive. Just a quick rundown on the building. Scott Johnson was the last owner that was there. He was there for about 20 years, retired and moved on. We brought the building department in, we kind of did a renovation on the inside, went through everything. I've already brought the building inspector up to speed on what these guys are trying to do, the same use. The only real different thing is to do the bins in the front for the landscape, which is, they did down the road at Emerald Landscaping, had it going for a little while, but they pulled the trigger kind of fast because he had another location. And right next to us, we have a vacant lot that they did it for years, which was earthworks. And I personally think it would be great for all the homeowners in town, including myself, with my business. Everything's been inspected inside the property by the fire department, by the building inspector, and signed off. And everybody's pretty happy that I turned the property over into a nice, you know, looking piece of property.
We see Carver kind of as an untapped market in our business. Currently, I think it's underserviced in terms of having a location that the residents can use for, you know, picking up their materials they need for projects, working on their yards. You know, the closest retail location is probably Intoxic River Materials down the street. And he's kind of limited in what he offers people. We'd be kind of full service, you'd have pavers and bluestone and stone and all the landscape materials you'd need to put a project together. We already use for our own projects. So it'd be kind of more like one-stop shopping for the small local contractor, as well as the homeowner, as well as our own needs for our projects, because we do projects from Boston down to the Cape. And we also see Carver as a good geographic location for our business. We're a 24-year-old company, South Shore-based since we started. We see Carver as a growing community, you know, now with the whole Route 44, you know, Thoroughfare going through, you know, I think that's going to spur a lot more development in this area. It's still relatively affordable community compared to some other towns on the South Shore. So I see this being attractive to younger families moving into town that are going to be doing projects on their houses. And geographically for us, it kind of still keeps us in the middle of the South Shore from Boston to the Cape. And with all the highway access, Route 495 and 44 and Route 3, it kind of suits us geographically pretty well.
If I could interrupt you for a second, I forgot to read the public hearing notice, and if I could do that. We have a public hearing notice, and according to the provisions, the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 12, 2016 at 7:00 in the Town, Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 4, on the application of our Ground Effects Landscaping LTD, a special permit under sections 2230 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw, located at 68 Main Street in Carver, Mass. Assesses map 71-lot 9-3, in order to operate a full-service landscape construction maintenance company in a general business district. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Planning Board Chair Bruce Mackey, Carver reporter, published dates March 25th, April 1st, 2016. And I'm sorry that I didn't read that at the beginning. If you could, I don't know if anybody has any questions. Did you have anything more to say?
No, I don't, sorry.
Okay. Now, the storage bins for the materials, where we going to place those?
So this is Main Street here. So it's going to lie in the front and then the right side perimeter of the parking lot, more or less. They're going to be made of concrete bins, and they'll be storing things like mulch and crushed stone and that type of stuff.
So they're going to be like, what's the concrete going to look like?
They're the concrete blocks, they're two-by-four blocks. They stack, the inner lock can stack on each other, so that they're portable and you can move them around if you want to change the dimensions of the bins or whatever. And then we would soften the facade from the street with some flowering plantings to kind of hide, take the curse off the bins on the front of the property. The street trees are already currently there. We would add to that to kind of soften the look of it from the road. I know you're doing a lot of road improvements on the highway here, and I think, you know, this would complement that, you know, once we get it set up and in place.
I wonder how that's going to, the new road, how that's going to affect what we have here? But I guess where the bounds are, that's the limits of the road, no matter?
Yeah, and the street trees are currently inside, you know, on the property, you know, not on town property. So I don't see it would affect it at all.
Now, do you plan on marking the parking spaces, say with?
They're already marked.
They're already marked there?
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody on the board here have any questions?
Mr. Chair, through you. Storage of the material above the septic leaching area, types of material that's going to go there? And I'm wondering if there is an impact to the?
Are you talking about in the back of the property?
In the front.
In the front.
In the front?
In the front. I'm wondering if the Board of Health has looked at that?
The Board of Health has not looked at it from what I know.
Okay. I know we're just starting, I just wanted to bring the question up.
Organic, crushed stone, loam, mulch, topsoil, sand, gravel. There's going to be nothing, no chemicals or pesticides or anything like that would be stored in the front of the property. It'll be bulk landscape materials for jobs.
Do you have a septic vent there, Will?
Yeah.
That's out of the storage area?
I was worried about.
Oh, for?
Type of leaching into the, into the septic leaching area, that's all. I didn't know what type of materials. But he said there's no chemicals in the mulch, and that was my biggest concern. Height of, height of the materials? I know?
Height of the materials, the bins will be three blocks high, so roughly six feet for the layout of the bins, and then the material would be, you know, piled in them. They would probably be, some of the piles would be a little bit taller than the bins, like the mulch and stuff, but the bulk of it will be about that six foot.
Okay, I know that at the previous Emerald Landscaping that was up the street, I know that in that decision, we restricted the heights on the material. And the reason that we did it was because of case of combustible fires and stuff like that from the old Chiptech, we had issues there, and it's more of a safety thing. So I'm going to, we'll look at that.
Yeah, we don't store like thousands of yards onsite. I mean, we pretty much bring it in by 100, 200 yards at a whack, and it's out the door. I mean, we're turning it, it's going out almost as fast as it comes in this time of year.
I do agree with you on two things that you missed, Mr. Chair, for the applicant.
We don't manufacture it, manufacture it either.
It is a need that's missed since Emerald's left.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to see that this is coming. I got to take one moment. Jamie, you've done a phenomenal class act with this building.
Thank you.
You've done unbelievable to what you've done with this building. I hear nothing but wow from the residents of this town of, what did you guys do there to make the owner do this? And you've done a great job on this building. It's a nice piece of property now on Main Street, Cavi, you've done a great job. So kudos to you.
Thank you. And I will say with, with meeting with these two gentlemen, that there was probably five or six different applications to go in there. And I mean, I'm a town guy, I'm heavily invested in this town on many properties, and, I mean, I handpicked what I thought was a good fit. And they are under a really, I mean, you probably will mention, hopefully with the license, they're under a very strict time of year right now, and they are just coming out of a lease at where they're at. And maybe if there's a possibility with this that we could do some conditions to help them along, I'm just trying to help the process there. I think they'd be a great fit for the town, and I went to their operation. These guys aren't a small landscaper that just, they're the real deal that, you know, does a lot of high-end jobs, and they're already, they're not looking to succeed by getting to this location, they're already successful.
Yeah, one of the, one of the biggest things for me is, is to make sure that the process is complete. And not only that, what you've done to improve in that property and the Main Street landscape is, is big on what this board has done in the past. So make sure that it's, it's going to be successful.
Yep.
And look really good, because it is Main Street, and the town and the state's investing quite a bit of money on redoing that.
That's right.
And you've invested quite a bit of money into that building.
A lot of money, yeah.
So we want to make sure that we have the right fit, and safety is an issue.
Yep.
The questions that I'm bringing up is just things that we've done in the past.
Yep.
So I want the applicant to make sure that we got them covered.
One thing I can tell the board is, you know, my business is intensely visual-based, you know, so we're not going to have it look like a dump, you know? What we sell is intensely visual, high-end, and that's what we're going to project to the residents of town, you know, very clean, organized, well-taken-care-of property, because that's our business.
That's great. Another question, you said the basin, the concrete blocks, similar to what was up in North, North Carver, the old ML excavation?
Yes.
You said the height of the blocks is going to be six feet?
Six feet, three blocks high. Blocks are two-by-four.
Okay. Question on the storage containers. The type of the containers, what's going to be in the containers?
The pre-existing, right now?
They're C containers, they're on the site right now. We're going to use them, our intent is for them to be used for off-season equipment storage. You know, in the summer months, it'll be snow blowers and snow plowing equipment, of that kind of nature. And then in the wintertime, it would get rotated out to, you know, lawn mowers and summer equipment would go in them when we're not, when we don't need it in the winter months.
Okay.
Just to kind of help us keeping it.
So where, just for the board and just from the minutes, where there's going to be some type of fuel in the equipment and stuff, we want to look at maybe some comments from the fire department on hazardous material, stuff like that, okay? Just for storage end of it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the same thing that Scott Johnson did.
Yep.
And they're the same containers, they've probably been there for 20 years.
Sure.
It was just, you know, to keep everything out of the weather.
Yep. It's a good idea. I just want to make sure that we?
Yep, absolutely.
Check all our bases. The yard office trailer, out front, right up front, do you have a design of what that is going to be? Is that just a typical?
I can get you a picture of it, but it's basically an eight-by-20, ground-level, prefab office container.
Almost like they got at the fire department right now, but a smaller version, the 20-foot.
And that's just going to be for the yard office, for the yard manager to be able to, you know, do paperwork and deliveries and coordinate that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Because the office space in the building is a little bit tight with us moving in.
I noticed that you had the gated posts, and that's probably going to make the yard more secure going in and out.
Yep.
The distance going from the Main Street coming in to that gate area, I'm sure that's where you're going to have your office manager checking, the yard manager coming in and out on not only your direction to the landscape area, but I'm concerned about stacking there, coming in and out of the facility onto Main Street. I need you guys to look at that.
This gate?
Yes, sir.
This gate will only be closed at night. It's not going to be to direct traffic. The way we're designing the yard is that contractors can pull in and park in any of the parking spaces. Most of my employees will park in the back of the property.
Okay.
So there'll be parking spaces here for customers, and in the front for customers, and also some room in the middle for customers. The yard office is just, that's the most convenient place to put it for customer circulation. But basically, you know, with this kind of a yard, you know, the customer comes in, tells us what they want, they get loaded, and they go out. You know, they don't spend a lot of time on the property.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't see like a log jam like you do at Dunkin' Donuts in the morning.
That's my biggest concern.
Majority of the business is going to be probably delivery more than pickup. I mean, how many yards can really, you put in your trunk?
Preferably a whole lot.
Yeah. So I see a lot of it being more phone-based business with local residents.
And Emerald had a pretty similar, I know what you're saying, Will, you're worried about someone pulling up, and then someone else coming off the road, and then a third person.
Yep.
Emerald kind of had, I mean, the same thing, it was, that's why it was going to be good, but he pulled the trigger on it at the second year, and I actually spoke with them, I wanted to know why.
Yep.
He's got another location, he got so busy with state work, he was more bothered by it than anything.
Yes.
But there was, one of the best things about what it was over there is, me as a builder, I used to drive in with my trailer, it was quick, they had one guy there with a loader, he loaded you, and you were right back out. And there was never a, there was never that many people picking mulch up there or stone.
I think that, I do, probably getting a little off-base, but I do agree with you, I think they pulled the trigger way too soon because the business was needed in the area, and it was a great location, and this is a great location, especially for this community, which is a farming community, and people don't want to run to Home Depot, to be honest with you. They'd rather spend money with a local guy that's, that's doing business in town that cares about the town, you know, so.
Time to roll over the balcony.
I guess so, my concern is just coming in and out of there. Well, you have the office trailer, I'm trying to grasp my head around.
This is flexible, I can easily move this back if it makes you more comfortable.
Just the purpose for it, if he's the guy who's going to control the yard during a normal day, you know, okay, he's, me as a customer, I'm going to come to that office trailer, and I'm going to purchase three yards of loom or whatever, a mulch. I'm going to go in, pay him, go out to the yard, get it, loaded, coming out, that type of stuff. The transactions are going to take place. It's going to be at that office trailer, they're not going to go to the existing building to do that, correct?
Correct.
All right, so that, that's a place of congestion, all right? So I, for me personally, I want to look at it and be able to probably see if we can move it further away from the main entrance coming into the building.
No problem with that. We can center it, we could center it right along this, in this area here, or move it all the way back to the corner. Doesn't really matter to me where the offices are.
People are going to direct that way. Me personally, I would prefer it in the back corner.
Okay.
But that's me, and I'm not going to tell you how to design your land and how your business was going to go.
The place that it has long, is it's on that side of the property?
Yeah.
Anywhere, it will work.
As long as it works in your, I'm not going to tell you how to run your business, you're the expert, you know what I mean? That was just a concern. And the, and the look of it's going to be interesting to me because it's on Main Street, you know? So just like a cut sheet or whatever, what it's going to look like to better define traffic flow.
No problem.
Other than that, at this stage, I'm good?
Yes.
You have any questions?
Will handle the traffic flow concern that I had as far as coming in and off the street. And then the trailer, I mean, having the trailer, is it something that maybe you would consider down the road, seeing that you would make this successful, that you might change out of?
That would be my plan, my plan would be to build a small, permanent, you know, like office structure for the yard that would match the facade of the building and tie it all together. This is just kind of initially to get it off the ground as fast as possible for the first year, because we're already in the middle of April. Luckily, the weather's been horrible, nobody's been helping with their yards, but it's all going to come at us fast and furious once we get into May. So we're going to be able to do this as quickly as possible.
Okay.
From one facility to the new one.
What are the hours of operation and the months that you're going, is this going to be a year-round?
Well, our company is a year-round company. The yard will be primarily April through December. And in the winter months, you know, it's very quiet in our business unless it's snowing. So there won't be a lot of activity, you know, from December, January, February, other than my crews doing their snow removal work, sort of coming and going for that.
And that, getting back to the traffic, at any given time, what are you anticipating for vehicles that are going to be there and company, employees?
Well, our company currently has 15 vehicles. Most of them are gone during business hours on projects. And then, you know, we have anywhere from 10 to 20 employee vehicles that will be parked in the back during the daytime. It'd be very quiet at night.
Except for the snow removal.
Except for the snow removal. But even that, it's just getting going, and then once the trucks are gone, I mean, they're gone for, they're gone for the snow start duration.
Do you have hours of operation, what the hours are going to be?
Yeah, the hours would be Monday through Saturday, and it'd be 7 to 4 o'clock in the retail part of the business. And the landscape contracting business starts 7 to 5, Monday through Saturday.
Other than the material that you're going to store in the bins, are you going to store like, I saw in the brochure, you have stone and what type of material?
Yeah, there'd be pallets of pavers and stone and things like that. Some will be, you know, displayed out in the front for customers to see, and then other stock will be stored in the back where our equipment is.
I want to, of course, another question I have is, and you won't be dumping any of the yard waste there on that site, you have facility, will you do that?
If there are no more questions from the board, I'll see if anybody out in the audience has anything. So I'll open this meeting up to the public, and if anybody would like to make any questions or comments, if you could come up to the microphone and talk, please.
Okay. My name is Arthur Parent, I live at 65 Main Street, which is diagonally across from this proposed location, and I have two concerns. Basically, the same thing as when Scott Johnson was over there. Number one, he was storing an awful lot of grass clippings over there, yard waste, and the smell was atrocious. The planning board at one time addressed this and told him he could not store this on-site. I would like to see the same thing done here. And the other concern is noise at 7, at 5, 6 o'clock in the morning, loading trucks. He was also told he could not load trucks before 7 o'clock in the morning, to try to keep, you know, a little peace and quiet in the neighborhood. I realize we live in a residential, residential commercial zone, which, you know, businesses allow it. I'm not against the business, believe me. I have to say they did a wonderful job on the building, considering what it looked like before they started on this thing. Really a nice-looking job. But those are my concerns, you know, and in the summertime, when those glass clippings were starting to rot, it was really bad when the wind rolled across the street. And I would like to see a preventant put in there where they could not store this on-site. And also, the only morning noise, you know, if we could do something about that, that would be greatly appreciated also. Those are my two concerns.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll, we'll have these gentlemen address that. If you could, address those, if you could speak up to the microphone, please.
Sir, I totally understand your point of view on the grass clippings and? My crews empty their trucks on the way back to the office every day. So we don't?
Yeah, I can live with that.
Yeah, we're not a composting facility, we're not going to put a big pile in the back, we can't actually because of the 55er.
Where are we going to store them, sir? In the front?
The materials will be in the front.
Yeah.
And that's just mulch.
Yeah.
Which actually smells pretty good. Loam, crushed stone, stone dust, that kind of stuff. And then there'll be pallets of pavers and rock and things like that.
And what about the noise in the mornings?
Well, we don't start, our workday starts at 7:00. My crews aren't even allowed to do anything until 7:00.
You won't be loading trucks at 5:00 in the morning?
No, the only time, you know, that we would have to start early is snow plowing in the winter.
Well, my window's open anyway.
It wouldn't be a day, every day. If so, you know, we get called in at 2:00 in the morning.
Right.
And we got to go.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But weekday operations, you know, I understand. But weekday operations, you know, I understand, you know, we wanna be good citizens and, um, but we don't start our day tops out at the five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to have any questions or comments? Please come forward.
How you doing? I'm Jimmy LeGrand, I live right across the street at sixty-three, next to Mr. Perrin. Had the same issues, you know, Mr. Johnson had like bigger pile of grass, bigger than the building out back, you know? And he was gonna put air fresheners on the fence so it would smell better, he said, you know? And then he had someone living there, is anybody occupied the building? He said, you know, someone was always living in the place and they'd be out at twelve o'clock at night, sitting in the cabin a few years and stuff. And my wife works nights and they used to start at five in the morning, cut the grass on Sundays and stuff up front.
Okay, so.
Did a great job of the building, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I will just wanna say that, um, over the years, he did turn quite a mess and, uh, he just kept adding and adding and adding. And I think when a mulch pile got down low, for the next year, he just pushed it into a pile and there was, um, these people are completely correct on, but prior to me owning the building. Uh, we took eighteen tractor trailer loads out of there of, we don't even know what it was. It was a mixture of everything. And, um, they're absolutely correct. I mean, he definitely crossed the lines. Um, and at the end, unfortunately, Scott went through a divorce and he is correct, he was living in the building, you know? Um, so, uh, but there's, there's, everything's done, everything's cleaned, um, everything's a hundred percent. And like I said, I walked through the, I, I welcomed the fire department out, I brought them through all my inspections, I brought the building commissioner. Everybody has seen everything, but those, those are correct statements, and it's all been cleaned up.
Thank you.
I think it would be important, I think we would like to have the flexibility of having a small container in the back of the building for not just grass clippings, but for edgings and, and green waste. What we've done in the past is we've had a small bin, holds about forty yards worth of material. And as that fills up, you guys just load them up in the trucks and head it out. It's a lot more efficient for us to take half a load and bring it back to the shop and dump it than to go and dump half a load at, at where we go, which is Go Green. Um, for us to be able to run it as efficiently as possible, it would be nice to be able to have a small composting, this is, location in the back so that we're not wasting time and money by trying to dump half a ton.
There's no corn pass post in the town, cause I have horses and you couldn't put the stuff all back or anything.
Well, it's not even composting, it's literally just, it's short-term storage, put it that way.
That's just not near from us.
I'm sure we will.
How short-term is, would that be?
Like a week, couple of days, and then we have a roll-off dumpster truck.
And it's fine, humid?
And then it gets moved, we empty it.
Well, we'll have to see, um, we'll, we'll have to look into that to see how long, you know, whether it be a couple of days or a week. I mean, how long does it take before that stuff starts to smell? You know, we're just concerned about the neighbors', you know, concerns.
I understand, and we would be on top of it so that we don't have an issue. But we're not gonna just pile up like a year's worth of grass clippings. We don't do that in our current building.
So Mr., Mr. Chair threw you to the applicant. Um, could you provide us with a, uh, process of, um, schedules for removal of?
Sure.
Of, uh, the compost? Uh, whether or not it is, um, the container's full or not, that it's removed on an, every other day, every third day, whatever it is?
It would be happy to.
You guys come up with some type of plan to submit to the board so we can look at it? And in the meantime, we'll look at, um, the bylaws and stuff and take, see what we need to address on that point.
One of the things that I'd add is Scott Johnson was pretty much strictly a lawn mowing company. Why he generated so much grass clippings, that's why it stunk so bad. We're not, we, I would say, out of our business, maybe ten percent of it is generated from lawn. The rest is, um, trees and bushes and leaves and lanterns. It's a mixture of stuff, so it's not gonna be that, I didn't know exactly what you were talking about. It's god-awful when you have a ton of year's worth of grass. Right, cooking, it's awful. Artists doesn't like that, it's a lot of mixed up green waste. So it's not that grass smell that just rots and rots and rots, it's totally different.
It's dirt, it's thumps, it's rocks, it's, you know, concrete, it's a little bit of everything. Um, but what we do is we, you know, like Peter said, it doesn't always make sense to take a half-loaded truck to the dump. And they just bring it back and dump it, and then we fill up our big dumpster and take it when we have a full truckload. But we turn it, like I said, we turn it every few days in our operation now. We don't let it build up because we can't bring it under the roof. And this would be very similar. And, uh, it wouldn't be left to just rot for weeks and months at a time.
So, like Will said, we, we'll need a schedule for that, so we can.
Yeah, no problem.
And so we can look at it, and so the neighbors can, you know?
Yeah, we want, like I said, we wanna be good citizens and get along with everybody and hopefully we'll have a long, long run in Carver and, uh, be, you know, be a good member of the community, and that's what, you know, that's what we're trying to do.
Two things, Mr. Chair threw you. Um, uh, material droppings, uh, some type of control, uh, in place for droppings coming out of your yard onto Main Street? You guys could come up with something for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other thing that I'm, I'm curious is on, in this application, uh, the sign? Is it part of, where, how far back from the street in the design? I know that you have it here, but what the specifications are?
The sign is currently there, the frame for the sign is currently there. All we're showing is, Jake, wanna highlight that?
Yeah, the sign, uh, we took it all the way through the permit process. Uh, Greg Brennan did the sign.
Yep.
If you're familiar with him.
Yep.
Um, and, um, they're basically, uh, gonna use the space on the sign.
Okay.
Um, we, we, we did the setbacks off the road, we, we actually talked with, uh, Lawrence Lynch. Uh, they, they seem to know the best about how far back it needed to be. And it should be all, all set.
Just probably, we wanted to check.
Yeah, just sort of.
But it is existing.
This is what Jamie's referring to, is the main, the sixty-eight Main Street section of the sign? That's already, it's been installed.
Okay.
It's just, this is the, what our panels would look like inside there.
Okay, thank you, Jamie, for the update.
So we would need a, an additional sign permit for that then, if it's existing?
Just came through it, yeah. We just literally did it maybe like a month ago, it went up and went through the process.
Okay. Does it have to come before the board?
So you did the sign, I think it was in December?
Oh, we did, okay.
And it's, it's been approved for the, for the frame? Now, if you want the specifications on their particular panels, we can make that part of this application. And you can approve that as this application, if we can just have that, you know, the dimensions of the different, um, sections. But you've, you've already, oh, the sign's there.
Okay. Is that sign lit, or is it, uh?
It is an epistime.
Do you plan to, uh?
I put a piece of conduit, um, under the ground over to the grass, so if, in the future, um, they wanna come back in front of the board and, and do that.
Okay.
So there is a provision there at least to do it in the future.
All right. I did have one more question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Would you be conducting any repairs to the vehicles on the site? Or, you know, would you have oil spill or anything like that?
Just routine PM maintenance, um, you know, checking oil, um, checking air pressure on tires, fixing lights, things like that. Any major repairs, overhauls, anything like that, we outsource all of that, yeah.
Yes, my idea. I want, you know, for the sake of the, uh, residents in the area, I wanted to make sure that, you know, it didn't turn into a, a workshop in the sense that you're also, uh, servicing the vehicles there. Um, and I think probably would really be a good idea for us to make sure there's a condition that they don't have any, anybody, uh, living in the building.
It's on my list.
Well, it's hard for us to get a word in because you usually take care of everything.
Actually, too, on, on, on that, on the, uh, living and then Scott Johnson, actually, the, the building originally, um, I don't know if anyone here remembers it way back in the day, but had a hundred and fifty car, used car license, that's what the building was originally was. Worked on cars, it's in the general business district. And, um, they, uh, they sold it, went out of business, then a few other people had it. But, uh, there was a shower put in the business right from day one. Um, and, uh, I removed the shower right off, it's no longer there. And there was like an old kitchen that was in it. And, um, I also removed that and put a small office kitchen back in. And, um, so there's no, there's no, no provisions anymore to, uh, I think originally the shower was possibly with the snow plowing. Uh, the guy's working late or something and maybe, but I think at the end, when somebody was living there, it was probably used because he needed to live there, you know? But there is no longer one there.
Anybody else out in the, uh, audience?
I neglected to ask, are you gonna store fertilizers in Cameron Holdon's site?
We are gonna store fertilizers, but they turn, so what I mean by that is as soon as they come in, they go right out. So they'll be there for, I don't know, four days and then next thing you know, they're gone.
There's no loss there, long-term storage of, uh, fertilizers.
We don't like stuff sitting around, we like to.
So they've been loading the trucks at night before, or early in the morning, that's only before seven o'clock?
Yeah, sometimes they'll load them at like four o'clock in the afternoon, but then no one's coming in midnight and loading trucks.
Now, the fertilizers that is gonna be stored on the property, that's for your, for your men's use for the landscaping? Yeah, okay.
It's just for our own use, for our, our project use.
Well, you're not gonna be selling.
So fertilizer, no?
No, we don't intend to sell retail fertilizer, correct?
You're gonna have a showroom of some sort, showing the different pavers and arrangements and, you know, I've, like I've seen.
There'll be some displays in the front, um, once we get going. Um, and that'll kinda grow a little bit from year to year, um, as product lines change and things like that. Initially, it, it's just gonna be, um, the products that we're currently using in our, our construction business. Um, they sell mulch, mulch, loam, so those are things that people readily need access to, um, turn the fastest. So as we get distributorships with paving companies and things like that, some of the products will, you know, that product might grow, you know, probably a year or two. Um, but initially, it's gonna be primarily bulk products that people would need to pick up for their yards.
So you're moving your whole operation to Carver?
Correct.
So this'll be your?
In the spring, by the way. Now a good time to do it.
How many employees do you have?
Currently, we have about twenty, and then at the peak of the season, that can grow up to, upward to thirty-five. Probably is about the max. We run about seven crews, um, you know, forty to fifty hours a week. And, you know, we're a year-round operation, we do smaller commerciality on the South Shore from Plymouth up to Leamouth in the wintertime. And, um, you know, the wintertime, we probably have about ten, forty's, they're year-round staff for us in seasonal, as we need them.
I saw some of your crews in Hingham today.
We do a lot of work in Hingham, quite a bit.
Uh, any other questions from the board? So we, we have these, uh, things that need to be addressed, so we'll continue the meeting?
Yep.
To the next?
So the next meeting date is the twenty-sixth. So if you, if you want, you know, well, I'll take in all the information that they, you know, they can drop it off at the office and I'll have it ready for your next meeting. I'll check in with the fire department to get, you know, their comments on the equipment being stored with fuel. And if you, I, if, do you feel like you need to do a site visit for this property?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it, it's existing, so I, yeah, I mean, I don't think so, not, not in this particular case. One of the rare cases, but I don't think in this particular case we need to.
Okay, so we'll just gather the outstanding information, put it back on the next agenda, you can review it. If you wanna close the hearing, I can have, uh, a motion drafted for your consideration then.
And, uh, and we're gonna have the, uh, board of health maybe take a look at that too, okay?
Yep.
Well, hopefully, if we get all our concerns addressed, uh, for the next meeting, uh, we may be able to move in shortly.
Great, thank you very much.
One question before we go, Mr. Chair, dust, dust control, what do you guys do for dust control now?
Um, two things, we have a, um, sweeper, a street sweeper for our bobcat that, that brings everything up.
Okay.
Um, and the yard is paved, so it's not like you're driving on a gravel, crushed gravel parking lot, the, the dust should be the minimum.
Okay. Just concern with our neighbors, that's all.
Yeah.
Perfect.
No, it's not gonna be like driving through Lander's pit, you know, with the car behind you, I don't foresee that at all.
Okay. Good.
All right, we need a motion for, to continue the public hearing.
Set to the twenty-sixth, ma'am?
Yeah, the twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for ground effects, landscape and sixty-eight Main Street to the twenty-sixth at seven o'clock.
Second that.
So we have a motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You guys too, thank you very much.
Uh, the next is a site plan, uh, review for Jamie Emerson on Tremont Street. It was, uh, Sessas map, ninety-five dash three dash one for the construction of a seven thousand four hundred seventy square foot building and associated site work in a general business district, uh, under zoning bylaw thirty-one hundred. If, if you could just, uh, move out into the hallway, please, so we could continue the meeting, thank you. And, uh, Marlene, uh, told me tonight that she, uh, received this, uh, email, says, please accept this email, email as a request to continue the public hearing schedule for this evening until, uh, April twenty-sixth agenda. This will allow the project to close out with the conservation prior to the planning board approval. If the board would like to, uh, schedule a site walk, please let me know, um, uh, the date and time and attendance, and that was, uh, from Greg Morse.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to the twenty-sixth, uh, meeting at seven o'clock.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, uh, and before, okay, um, motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
And I don't know if anybody at this time wants to do a site walk, to take a look at what we have out there?
We should definitely do a site walk.
Yeah.
Just so you guys, I know Marlene, I keep saying it, I am away, but I will be here on the twenty-sixth meeting, so, um, I don't know if you guys wanna try to do something next week? What do you have for a schedule for next week?
So, my, um, I'm, Monday is a holiday, and then I'm out of town Tuesday and Wednesday next week. Um, but I can do it anytime on Thursday, can do it Friday morning, or we can do it, are you here on Monday, the twenty-fifth?
I am.
Or Monday, the twenty-fifth, or even Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, before the meeting?
I would say the twenty-fifth, only for the reason we had a backup time for RDA on the twenty-fourth.
You do, yeah.
That would work in my schedule, I don't know what you guys, it's a Monday.
What do we have? What was the thing you said?
I have a, um, backup tentative, uh, reserve spot for the twenty-first for a meeting for the redevelopment authority.
Okay.
Although, that will probably be like a seven o'clock meeting?
Yeah, it will be seven, I mean, we could do it.
Wanted to do a site visit at earlier, four-thirty or five, that could.
Later the better for me.
Later the better.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it doesn't make any difference what day it is to me, but, uh, later in the day is, is, is better.
So.
You guys good, what, the Monday?
Monday?
The twenty-fifth?
Monday, the twenty-fifth?
You enjoying the afternoon after work?
Late, like Bruce said, as late as we can make it, I'm still far behind.
What time do you guys wanna do it?
What, what's a good time that you're usually getting back, I know you're behind.
Dark, so that's not gonna work for anybody.
Um, you wanna try for like six o'clock?
Yeah. Is that good, Bruce?
That, that, that worked great for me.
Or a few?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm gonna post that? So, I'm going to post that and I'll send you guys all a reminder.
Okay.
And I'll let Greg Morris know that that's your schedule. Yep, Mon- uh, Monday, 4:25 at 6:00 P.M.
And, um, seeing, talking with you, we, you've, well, we'll have to talk to him and see what he's got staked out there.
Yeah.
You know, whether he has the front corners, maybe the building.
I know that the property has been staked for the conservation hearings, so I'll confirm with him what is staked.
Okay.
And, um, you know, I'll tell him, "We want the lot corners, we want the building corners, we want, you know, those types of landmarks for, you know, the driveway entrances, that type of stuff."
As long as he labels them, we can do it ourselves.
Yep, we can read the polls.
Right. Geez, I, I used to do that for 30 years, reading.
Oh.
All right. Uh, so, do, uh, okay, so, so we already, uh, voted to, uh, to continue that meeting? Or do we have to continue that meeting?
We voted to continue it.
We voted to continue it. We don't have to vote on, on the, uh, site walk, though. Okay, discussion, uh, review of the final plan submitted for, uh, Lindby's Path Definitive Plan Decision dated May 26, 2015.
Yeah, so, um, this, uh, this is a six lot subdivision that the board did that's been kind of dragging out for you. It was filed in 2015, um, and it's six lots off of High Street. Just recently, you voted to allow them to change the name and we voted to allow the, the waiver for the grade at the intersection. I've got the decision in your packet, I think, for you. It has a number of conditions in it that I want to go through with you. Before, I can recommend that you sign the MyLars. So, condition number one is that the decision be filed with the Registry of Deeds. That has been done. It is on file. The conveyance of the Conservation Commission will be done. That's not something that you need to wait until you endorse, that doesn't need to be done before you endorse. Number three, prior to your endorsement, we need a covenant. I have those here, I have that here. The property, the property owner has signed, so I'm going to recommend that you sign these and I'll... It's a duplicate, it's a duplicate original, so what, what I do for covenants, because I've learned the hard way, is that the applicant takes one original and gets it recorded. I keep an original in your file because sometimes they get lost. So, I'm always going to, when you sign covenants, I'm always going to ask you to sign a duplicate original. So, I have those, I've reviewed the, I reviewed it, it's, um, it's sufficient, it, it covers everything it needs to do. So, I can recommend that you endure, um, sign the covenants and I'll have your signature notarized. We don't need to worry about number four yet because you're not releasing any lots from the covenant, so we'll check that before you vote to release anything. Number five is not an issue yet, that's before road, uh, it's taken by town meeting. Number six is not an issue right now, there's no change in ownership contemplated. Number seven is fine, number eight is fine. Number nine is the, um, three house building, three house lots will be given building permits and then no more until the inclusionary unit on lot number four is built. So, that's something that we'll, we'll just watch that phasing. Number 10 is, prior to endorsement, you will, you, um, need revised final plans, must be approved by the planning board and town engineer. So, we have those revised final plans tonight, they're, they're on the table for you. I only received them with the revised drainage, I think, on Thursday of last week. Sean Martin does have that. I don't have his comments back yet. So, that's the only reason I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that you not endorse the Mylar and sign the plans tonight. So, what I would suggest you do is, um, I'll follow up with Sean. And if you want to take a look at the revised plans tonight, if you feel comfortable, when we receive Sean's final okay, that everything's been addressed, I'll let you know and you can come in and, um, sign the plans at that time. So, you can essentially say, "Yes, we're happy with this, the covenant, we have the covenant, the covenant's signed," and, um, make the signing of the Mylar contingent on receiving final word back from Sean. He, it just, it, there was just not enough time for him to get his comments to you by tonight's meeting.
And if we go to wait to sign that, wait for his comments, not a big deal? Or what's, what's, is there a rush?
Um, the applicant just wants to get started, so the sooner he gets the stuff, he can, you know, record it and get going. But if you want to wait until the 26th to bring it back, we can certainly do that.
Okay. I'd prefer to wait to hear from our engineer or make sure that everything's okay. It's my opinion, it's up to you guys. Um, I'd rather wait. And the other question I had for you, Marlene, is the only people to sign, sign this would be the people that approved? Or anybody can sign this?
No, anybody can sign it because, I mean, I mean, you've had, you've had elections between now and then, so the, at the... As long as a majority of the current sitting members of the planning board sign it, that's, that's okay. I would prefer that the same, it doesn't even have to be the same people who sign the covenant and the Mylar. So, as long as everybody's on the planning board and as long as there's a majority of your signatures, that's all we need.
Perfect.
So, I will follow up with Sean, um, and we will put it on the agenda for the 26th. But while we have them here, I am going to ask you to sign the covenants, if that's okay. Because that's a piece that they can take now.
I think that'll be fine.
Okay, so I'm going to pass these down for you. Signature page is on the last, is page four.
So, uh, we need a motion to continue the meeting?
No.
To, it's, uh...
Nope. I'll just put it back, I'll just put it back on your agenda on the 26th when we have Mr. Martin's comments.
All right, and then we can sign the MyLars?
Yep.
All right, the next thing on the agenda. I lost my agenda. It's, it's here somewhere. Oh, here it is. No, that's not it.
Do you need another one?
There was one, one more discussion point, thank you. I don't know if I sent it off with those papers or not. The second discussion, uh, we had were comments to be sent to the ZBA regarding, uh, the proposed 40B subdivision off of Plymouth Street. And I noticed that, uh, in our packages, we did, we have a, uh, plan of the, uh, the proposed, uh, 40B subdivision off of Plymouth Road, it says. But it's, uh, it's not very specific. It doesn't, uh, have the septic systems, uh, and it, and it doesn't give us, uh, any details. This is pretty much what, um, was presented to the housing partnership. They, they came before the housing partnership, which I am a part of and, um, chairman of. And, uh, they, uh, brought this forward to us as a friendly 40B. And, um, I see that it hasn't progressed, uh, any further than the last time we discussed this, so, um... They, they came to us, um, I think they wanted, um, over 40 lots. We had several meetings with the neighbors and, uh, they, uh, decided that the, the least amount of lots that they, they could, uh, do it with was 39. And, um, so we, we really don't have any details, but, uh, Marlene, you, you were saying that they were going to finalize these plans?
So, they do need to give the zoning board a more, um, detailed submission with the engineering designs. Right now, we don't have a stormwater system designed or any of those calculations or grading plan or any of the roadway construction standards. We don't have a, a profile or cross-section or anything. They are supposed to provide those by mid-June, so I would, um, I would recommend that when we have those more definitive plans, I bring them back to you and you can talk about them. I feel like these plans are, are a little bit too conceptual and a little bit... We just don't have enough information to make a responsible referral at this point.
I would, I would go along with that. And we don't really, we don't have, that no drainage is shown, uh, size of the roads aren't shown. And there's, there's a lot left out of these. Even back in the day when I was doing this stuff, sometimes we'd have preliminary plans and then we'd go for the final plans. And this doesn't even meet the preliminary plan, um, stage yet, so they still have a, a lot to do. And probably, uh, so that we could have a, a real discussion, uh, we, we really need to, to see some plans updated with more detail. So, why don't we, uh...
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if Marlene can answer them, but she can at least bring it back to the ZBA.
Sure.
Has the ZBA, um, hired the, hired an engineer to look at and follow this process?
Not yet, and part of the reason they have not done that yet is we need, in order to do the procurement, in order to, to do the scope of work and, and negotiate the price, the peer engineering firm needs to understand what the review of the plans entail. And right now, the, the plans, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have the plans to send out as part of our, our procurement package to get those prices back. But it is something that, when we have those plans, will be set up and, you know, ready to do.
Could you give us a idea of what happened at the initial hearing of this proposed 40B? What, what the ZBA has done to this point? Did they just open it and close it, uh, continue it, or?
No, um, the first hearing was open, procedurally opened and continued. They did have a discussion on, um, the 18th, the 17th of April, I think the 17th or 18th of April. And I'm not going to summarize that, um, discussion, but when the, you know, obviously, when the minutes are available, they'll be on the website. It was televised, so just anyone who's interested can probably, um, stream it or cut, I, I'm not sure on, on the schedule for, for reviewing it, but, um, there was a, there was a hearing.
Do you know when the minutes will be available?
We do have draft minutes, so anyone can, can have a copy of the draft minutes, but the final minutes won't be available until the board meets again and votes. And right now, the hearing's been continued until July 21st.
I'll probably want a copy of the draft minutes and just so I can get up to speed.
Yep.
Right, so we'll just, uh, we'll just wait till we get more detailed plans. Okay, going, uh, to other business, we have, uh, Planning Board Member Notes. Does anybody have anything, I think Will may have something to say today.
I do. I have a couple of things, uh, also like to remind people of the master plan committee, uh, meetings. We meet on the 3rd, um, Monday of the month. I do believe we, uh, I'm probably not going to have it in here.
It's actually the 25th this time.
I know that we missed, we changed it.
It's the 25th, right after the site visit.
Right, so it'll be the 25th this, this month because of the holiday. I encourage all, all the citizens of the town and members to be involved. We definitely need your assistance as we, um, scope out our future of Carver, so thank you very much. Another thing I want to address and I want to clarify, and this is mostly for the public, um, and also for the planning board, there's a lot of misinformation that is out there for the, uh, urban renewal plan. It is not a plan that this planning board is doing. The urban renewal plan is a redevelopment authority conceptual plan, it is not this board's. There's a lot of misinformation out there. I encourage people. The, uh, redevelopment authority holds meetings on this. We're moving forward with this plan. Um, we have public meetings. I encourage people to come. Tomorrow night, on Wednesday night, here at 7:00, we, we have a redevelopment authority meeting that will be held here. But again, the misinformation, it is not this planning board or the planning board members that are doing this plan. It's the redevelopment authority. Wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Anybody else have anything to, to say, Jim? Um, uh, next is the minutes of March 22nd, 2016.
I did have, I did want a little bit of clarification on, uh, the Borrego Solar dis, uh, conversation. The actual vote, um, that was made by myself to activate, uh, remote participation for, um, one of our members, Kevin Robinson. I think it's important why we made that vote where Kevin was out of town on a family, um, issue. I think it's important that we note that in this decision. That's why we enacted the, uh, remote participation. That's just for discussion, guys. Just for clarity, that's all. Where this board hasn't done remote participation before, I want to make sure that we were very specific on that. Other than that, I'd make a, a motion to approve the minutes as amended, adding that, please.
Have motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have, uh, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman.
In our next meeting, as we have, uh, scheduled a couple of things, it would be April 26, 2016.
I'd entertain, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Have motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, good evening, everybody.
Thank you.